This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.
I believe everybody's back. So I will recall the meeting to order. We've completed our closed session. The board has completed its evaluation of Superintendent Johnson. And we will be communicating the letter drafted by the board to Superintendent Johnson in the coming weeks. The first item, of course, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance. Those of you that are willing and able, please rise and join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First open session item tonight is a public hearing around district application for an instructional hours waiver. I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening. Chair Nordean, board members, student representatives, and executive team members. Jim Schmidt has the PowerPoint to share for our public hearing this evening and our waiver request. The information, on April 6, 2020, our board held a similar hearing and waiver process for instructional hours for the 1920 school year. It was approved. In our waiver application for this year, and after individual consultation in the DPI, I would like to share the following. Please advance. Thank you. As you can see, the instructional hours requirement is stated as such, with direct for pupil instruction being kindergarten for 437 hours, as well as grades one through six, and then seven through 12. That waiver waiving the hour requirement for any district requests the DPI do so throughout the entire school year to the ongoing COVID-19 public health emergency. And then per state law, we will need to hold this hearing this evening and then document the date of the hearing to receive the waiver. And why is it needed? I'd like to read some text here to share with the board in public. The Eau Claire Area School District is the third largest school district in the state to implement a blended hybrid instructional model. And this model was board-approved on July 20, 2020. While the district implemented its model on a hybrid in-person cohort AABB format, with Wednesdays as a student virtual learning day with activities and scheduled contact with teachers, our district delayed of one entire week in beginning our 100% virtual model for over 2,000 students. Instructional interruptions due to virtual learning shift starting on November 30, and the instructional interruptions due to staff and student quarantine from the ECASD will not allow us to reach the required hours of direct instruction for our students. Executive Director of Teaching Learning Jim Schmidt and I had reached out to the Department of Public Instruction's Tamara Moll in mid-March to illustrate the facets of our instructional model and ask for clarification on specifics of the waiver. After my last communication and conversation with Ms. Moll, she informed me that the component that would definitely require the waiver is the delay of one entire week for our 100% virtual model students. Otherwise, she was very appreciative and supportive of our rationale after her own final review. The Eau Claire Area School District has also met the additional administration rule requirements for this request. Our blended instructional model was approved by the board on July 20 of 2020. Further, this waiver is necessary to provide education in a virtual remote or mix of virtual remote and in-person formats per our board's approved COVID-19 educational plan and is codified in the submitted school board documentation. Our school district buildings have been closed to in-person instruction partially or completely on Wednesdays for continuity of our hybrid model. And education had been provided through an alternative matter such as virtual remote or mix of in-person virtual or remote learning models as approved by the board. The board will be unable to schedule and hold the minimum number of hours of direct to pupil instruction in an in-person format due to COVID-19, and it will and has fully reported our actions taken to provide education in an alternative format to the school board. Finally, we had scheduled sufficient days for parent-teacher conferences in inclement weather. The district held a virtual learning day for the Sole Inclement Weather Day. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll open it to questions or comments from the board. I will say to my colleagues that are attending remotely tonight, there appears to have been a slight update to the WebEx view. And the view is slightly changed of whether or not you are muted at a time, so it may be a little tricky for me to recognize whether you're trying to speak. So please bear with me as I try to figure out when you're up to say something. So I apologize if I'm slow to recognize you tonight. But anyway, comments or questions from board members? Dr. Johnson?
Are we aware, does, are we aware what impact for those school districts who apply for this particular waiver? For that impacts the ability for those discretionary funds that the state has control of? Do we have any idea? Does that impact our school district availability for some of those discretionary funds that Wisconsin has, just specific control, or do we know?
Yes, Dr. Johnson, I'll direct that to Abby Johnson. We have had communication. After some communication directed to superintendents, district administrators, directors of finance, as well as through WASP. But I'll let Abby answer those questions.
Thank you, Mike. Wanted to let you know, Dr. Johnson, that there was 144 school districts that qualified for that additional aid. And that was stemmed from the basis of the Title I allocation. And if you got a minimum of a per pupil allocation, unfortunately, the Eau Claire School District was above that minimum allocation. So we are not one of those 144 school districts. So there won't be any additional funding for us based upon the format of instruction we provided this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no other requests for recognition from my colleagues. Are we required to open public comment on one of these? I believe we are. Is that the case? Do any of you in the exact team know? And do we have anybody that signed up for public comment on this item?
No members of the public signed up for this portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Maida. In that case, we would need to move to our next item, which is the instructional hours request. We need a motion from the board to request an instructional hours waiver from the Wisconsin DPI.
Show move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We need to do a roll call vote on this. So Maida, if you would proceed.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We now move to our public forum. Members of the community that sign up to speak will be provided up to four minutes to address the board. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We have one speaker tonight signed up, and that speaker is Delina Young. Please start with your name and address for the record.
Hello and good evening. My name is Delina Young. My address is E2942 Haley Lane, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. And I am a current senior at Memorial High School. I am here tonight to share the results of a survey that I sent out to the Eau Claire Area School District High Schools recently in order to address general student opinions and provide a resource for student input regarding the recent decision to return to four-day-a-week in-person instruction. The survey results consist of 469 responses, but tonight I will be presenting results of the 421 student responses. Begin, one of the students surveyed, 15.4% stated explicit approval for returning to more synchronous learning. 10% responded that they didn't know if they approved or not, or being somewhat for and somewhat against the decision. 72.4% explicitly stated disapproval for attending school four days a week, and 2.1% expressed conditional disapproval, citing reasons such as "it doesn't seem to take in the opinions of the teachers and students as much," or "they should have done it sooner and not four weeks before the end of the school year." 99% of students surveyed were in high school. Regarding student stress levels, 75.1% of students reported that their stress levels had already increased or would increase in response to this decision. 12.4% of students reported that their stress levels would not change, and 11.2% reported either a predicted or immediate decrease in personal stress due to the decision. 77% of students are currently using their virtual days to work. And 20.2% of students say that going back to school four days a week will hurt them financially. 23% of students in Cohort A or B are considering switching to Cohort C, some because of financial reasons, others for help. When asked to pick from a list of concerns that applied to them concerning returning to four-day-a-week instruction or to write in their own, the following concerns were reported by more than 50% of students surveyed. Lack of social distancing, change of routine, loss of time for work, higher school workload, decreasing mental health, and experiencing a community-wide increase in COVID-19 cases. 35% of students surveyed reported concern for decreasing education quality, aligning cohorts, or having to take classes online outside of school hours. 9.5% expressed that they had no concerns. In contrast to this, 53.9% of students stated that they had no concerns regarding staying in a hybrid model. And less than 30% of students surveyed expressed concern about less synchronous learning, continuation of poor education quality, less opportunities to socialize, or worsening mental health, or the change to be reversed. As I close, I think it's crucial that the school board understand that regardless of which side they're on, these students clearly have opinions and concerns and want to succeed in school. With that in mind, I think it's absolutely necessary that going forward, student input is a major part of decisions such as this one. And it's equally as important that students feel heard and seen, and that things are put into place to help alleviate their concerns. As the school board, you have a responsibility to us, and I'm sure that you are well aware of this. But we also have a responsibility to share with you so you can understand us and help us. Thus, please take this survey seriously. Thank you for allowing me to present my data today. And if you would like to see the entire survey, including elaborated and written student responses, as well as the results gathered from parent, teacher, and community member responses, please contact me or my student representative, Emery Foel, and we will happily share it with you. Thank you very much for your time, and good night.
Thank you. We now move on to our superintendent's report. Superintendent Johnson?
Good evening. First, I wanted to share the DPI proclamation that April is School Library Month. Our libraries are the hearts of our schools, and I did want to recognize that fact. Our librarians across the district are passionate and make such a real difference for students and staff. Next, April is also Mung Heritage Month. The Mung American Club is hosting an event to celebrate Mung Heritage Month. On Tuesday, April 27, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be a panel of Mung American students and parents answering a few questions about their experiences as part of the district. This event will be held in the North High Auditorium. It only allows up to 85 people, and there will be prepackaged food afterward for people who attend in person. This event will also be streamed on Husky TV as well. We were recently notified that Memorial High School junior Audrey Holcher received a perfect score on the ACT. This is an amazing accomplishment. Only 23% of students who take the ACT receive a perfect score. Congratulations to Audrey. Excellent business school partnership this past Friday morning with Global Finishing Solutions from Osseo, Wisconsin, and North High School. We received a spray booth for the auto shop at North, and there was a celebration and demonstration on Friday morning. Terry Piper Thompson had helped organize, publicized this, and representatives from GFI, True Built Autobody in the district were present to support Kurt Madsen, Doug Devine, North High Technology Teacher. Kurt and Doug had shared how important this impact has been in our students. The students demonstrated their skills in the spray booth after a brief presentation from select individuals. Many thanks to Jim Schmidt, Becky Graff, Drew Sevelin, Heidi Newman Nealon, and Jeff Nester for their leadership and support in this partnership. Also to Janelle Pattonoff, North's partnership coordinator for her organization and leadership in the event, and Rene Moorehead, Family and Consumer Science Teacher, for her assistance in having the class make the cookies with the GFI and North High logos on them. I can honestly say there were not any left. I may have taken the last two. Okay, maybe three. It's always exciting when mixing the business partnerships and the community with such generosity, and we can see it leads to the inspiration for our students and our staff. Master schedules and information for our families have been shared last week to be of the high school principals in preparation for our May 3 return. Their master schedules are included with other pertinent information at this time. While still progressing with individual student situations and schedules and organization logistics, the framework is complete, where the administration and their staff can organize and address individual student concerns and needs. We've been able to be present in our middle schools recently to witness the work on their school individual schedules in preparation for next Monday's return. So very pleased with their progress and dedication in such a short time. Looking ahead to this week, this Wednesday, April 21, is our fifth Equity PD session, professional learning topic for our 50 system leaders, organized and supported by Heather Grant and Alyssa Knight. The focus for this training is pulling it all together for systems change. This is our last of five sessions with our outstanding team of leaders from UW Eau Claire. Jody Faeser-Ritter, Dan Vang, Chris Jorgensen, and Demetrius Smith. I'd like to recognize them for their assistance, knowledge, expertise, and support over the course of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I have an uncharacteristically short report tonight. The annual school board election was held Tuesday, April 5, along with other local and statewide elections. I'm very pleased to congratulate my three colleagues, Commissioners Clements, Johnson, and Zer on their reelection to the board. The board is excited for your continued effort and impact for our district. Welcome back. And this coming Thursday, April 22, Superintendent Johnson, Commissioner Lyons, and I will travel to Menominee to deliver testimony to the Legislature's Joint Finance Committee on the Governor's Proposed Budget. Abby Johnson will also present at a press event hosted by WPN. We will be highlighting some of the specific needs of ECASD and how the proposed biennial budget would positively impact our students. Special thanks to Commissioner Zer for bringing this forward to our attention so that we can get something together as a group and attend and give our voice to the process. Thank you. We now move on to our student representative reports. We'll start tonight with our representative from North High School, Zoe Wall.
Over the weekend, North had the first school-wide event in over a year. We had year games and food trucks in the parking lot Friday night, and then a formal prom event Saturday at the Lizmore that included dinner and a movie. Overall, it was a very fun weekend, and all students who attended had a great time. Student Council is also continuing to work hard planning various events around the school and community. Tonight, they hosted a blood drive at Hope Lutheran Church, and almost every slot was filled for people to donate blood. Additionally, we volunteer at the community-wide COVID vaccine clinic held at North on Wednesdays. Finally, I would like to say, please truly listen to what Emery has to say in his report this evening. He has put together a well-framed statement that reflects the reaction of most students and staff at both North and Memorial. I implore you all to reach out to students before making decisions that directly impact students and their families. We have voices, and they deserve to be heard. We have opinions and genuine concerns about many issues that have come up this year. Students need to be involved in decisions that impact our lives, especially the student representatives that sit on the school board alongside you. Neither Emery nor I received much communicate, received much communication prior to the announcement. In fact, we have received very little communication throughout our entire term, except from Superintendent Johnson and Kim Kohler, which have been amazing with providing information and guidance before every meeting. Students, student representatives are a resource that should be used on behalf of the student body. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to our representative from Memorial High School, Emery Thol.
Hello, can you all hear me?
You can.
My update tonight is one of great disappointment and dissatisfaction. Two weeks ago, I told you that students were looking forward to getting through this year in a format that they'd all gotten used to, and then returning to in-person in the fall. That was true when I said it, and it is true now. As you heard from one of the members of the public in a survey of more than 400 students, nearly three-quarters were not in favor of your decision to push them back to school. The simple fact that a student, dealing with the stress of this return herself, had to create the survey to get student input is a terrible failure of the board and those involved in this decision. The timing and distribution of your decision was no better. Your decision was announced sometime on election night, as three of you were facing a challenger who promised to have students back in school five days a week. When exactly on election night it was announced, I couldn't tell you because you also failed to actually notify the entire district. Many families, mine and Zoe's included, were in the dark and had to hear about this via word of mouth. This raises ethical concerns about your decision. Why exactly did you feel compelled to announce it on election night? Why didn't you contact the entire district? And which families did you choose to contact? At the end of the day, you made this decision based on the input of 40 parents chosen and contacted by administrative and bilingual education assistant staff. Not a single student was surveyed. Parents are not the ones who have to return to full, non-socially-distanced classrooms. They are not the ones who will have their schedules upended to recoup what is frankly a negligible amount of time at the end of the year. I'm aware that it is likely too late to walk back this poorly informed and timed decision, but there are certain things that you must do now to address student concerns and accommodate student decisions about this return. All students must be guaranteed a switch to fully virtual learning if they request it. No exceptions. You cannot force a student to return if you cannot enforce CDC guidelines in your schools. You must take steps to support students as they face increased rates of stress and anxiety. 75% of responding students said that their stress levels would or already had increased based on this decision. In conversations with students, this is a widespread sentiment, and it necessitates support and action. In the future, when you make decisions that directly impact students, you must seek student input. Especially at the secondary level, students are old enough to give informed input on the decisions that impact them. In fact, that is why the board has student representatives. Use us and the future students who will hold this position for our intended purpose to keep you abreast of student sentiment on the issues that affect us. If any of you would like to further discuss the data that was collected or student sentiment on your decision, please contact me by email, and I will happily oblige.
Thank you. We now move on to our committee reports. We'll start, as always, with budget development, and Commissioner Harder.
Thanks. We met at the Budget Development Committee Wednesday, April 6, to discuss the Employee Ad-Hoc Committee, and that's on our agenda for this evening. We'll be discussing that. And we are scheduled to meet again. Well, not till May 12. I think probably, depending on what happens in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Demographic trends and facilities planning, Kim Kohler.
The committee met last week and discussed the recommendation before the board from July of 2020. The committee agreed that that recommendation remains in light, after studying the data from APL and looking at enrollment projections for those elementary schools. In addition, the committee is looking perhaps to shift focus to our high schools, where we are seeing some capacity issues, and we expect that those capacity issues will continue for the next several years. So no options developed yet, really just the very beginnings of a conversation around that.
Thank you. LEAP, Jim Schmidt.
The LEAP Committee met last week. We reviewed some of their budgeting processes and received a brief update on the Artigzo Performance Agreement update process. They also reviewed their communications, including an update to their website. I encourage any of you to go to the district's website and put a slash LEAP, and you can see the updates to that, including a new video. And finally, they spent most of their time working on a presentation for tonight for the interest-rejoicing presentation that you'll be seeing later.
Thank you. Policy and Governance met April 8. We heard an update on Policy 411, Equal Educational Opportunities, from Dr. John Young and Manny Benblee. This work came from the work that was already done to standardize language around discrimination and people with disabilities. So 411 needed a larger rewrite to accommodate both changes to federal laws like Title IX, as well as district priorities that work continues. We next reviewed the many policies that currently include gender-specific language. The administration is working alongside experts at the university to ensure that policy language is changed to reflect gender inclusivity. We also received an update on Policy 370, Extracurricular Activities and Programs, as well as 377, Philosophy of Athletics, with an emphasis on equity. The committee discussed some of the challenges and barriers to participation, as well as how these programs fit into the many areas of equity that require the district's attention. And finally, we continued our discussion on school discipline that has grown from our review of Policy 445, the SRO policy. We learned about the proposed timeline and action plan from the administration to address disproportionality as we see across many district programs involving discipline, as well as special education. This discussion and consideration will continue at our next meeting, which is Thursday at 1:00 p.m. Next, we'll move to the legislative update. Dr. Johnson?
On April 14, the Department of Public Instruction sent out an email to district administrators that included a link to a survey from the State Department of Health Services, which is seeking input as it works to develop a statewide program to support school-based COVID-19 testing for teachers, staff, and students. The response will inform the development of a statewide program best suited to the needs of schools in Wisconsin. Participation in such testing programs would be optional. Possible testing options under consideration include: testing programs to test teachers, students, or staff who are symptomatic or who have been in close contact with an infected person; two, tested related to event-based outbreaks; and three, routine weekly testing for teachers, staff, and students. The statewide passage rate for school referendum on Tuesday, April 6, ballots dipped in comparison with recent elections, with the biggest dip coming in the rate of passage for ballot questions seeking approval of school borrowing, debt insurance. Of the 70 total school referendums on the April 6 ballot, 42 were passed for an overall passage rate of 60%. On April 9, the U.S. Department of Education released the COVID-19 Handbook, Volume 2, Roadmap to Reopening Safely and Meeting All Student Needs to provide additional strategies for safely reopening all American schools and to promote educational equity by addressing opportunity gaps that have been exacerbated by the pandemic. Building off of Volume 1, Strategies for Safely Reopening Elementary and Secondary Schools, which focused on health and safety measures that schools can use to successfully implement the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention's K-12 operational strategy. Volume 2 of the handbook focuses on research-based strategies to address the social, emotional, mental health, and academic impacts of the pandemic on students, educators, and staff, such as how to address any potential anxiety or depression some may face as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and a later year of remote learning. Finally, Jill Underly, district administrator from the Pecatonica Area School District, will be the next state superintendent of public instruction after garnering 58% of the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to our consent agenda. The board considers approval of the consent agenda with one vote with no discussion. Board members have either discussed these items or received information prior to the meeting. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Buckle in, this is our longest consent agenda ever. April 5, 2021, minutes of closed session, April 5, 2021. Minutes of closed session, April 12, 2021. Financial report, March 2021. 2020-2021 budget adjustments. Human resources employment report. Gifts in the amount of $14,026.63 for the period of March 1, 2021 through March 31, 2021. Payment of all bills in the amount of $5,345,301.23, and net payroll in the amount of $3,703,744.77 for the period of March 1. for the period of March 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2021. North High Gym Floor Construction Bid Approval. North High Parking Lot Construction Bid Approval. Memorial and North Culinary Lab Construction Bid Approval. Longfellow Elementary Parking Lot Construction Bid Approval. Sam Davie Elementary Water Main Construction Bid Approval. Final Notice of Nonrenewal of Teachers with Limited Term Contracts. Reemployment of Certified Staff for the 2021-2022 School Year. Changes to Policy 133: Board Vacancies. Changes to Policy 423: Public School Open Enrollment. Changes to Policy 424: Participation of Non-Public School Students in District Programs and Courses. And Approved Facility Use Fee Schedule for 2021-2022. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Mina, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
With the approval of the consent agenda and the employment report, we have a few announcements from Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. I have three announcements for our schools in the administrative higher ranks. Taylor Semmingson graduated from the University of Wisconsin-McCross in 2009 with a Bachelor of Science degree. He majored in Broadfield Social Studies Education and minored in History and Political Science. He also earned a Master's degree from Vittoria University of Educational Leadership. He holds licensure through the Wisconsin DPI to work as a principal and to teach history, political science, and broadfield social studies. In 2006, Taylor began working for the Oclare Area School District teaching eighth-grade social studies. He worked in that position for seven years before starting with the Eau Claire Area School District in 2016. He started with us as a seventh-grade social studies teacher at South, and last school year worked as a teacher on special assignment. This year, he is currently teaching social studies virtually to Eau Claire Area School District middle school students, as well as working as a teacher on special assignment at the Long Middle School. Taylor will be the new assistant principal at the Long Middle School starting with the 2021-2022 school year. Next, Justin Jablowski graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Seltzer in 2014 with a Bachelor of Science degree in education. He majored in cross-categorical special education and minor in vocational rehabilitation. He also completed coursework from UW Milwaukee in 2015 to earn certification in alternative ed. In 2017, Justin earned a Master's degree from UW Milwaukee in administrative leadership. He holds licensure through the Wisconsin DPI to work as a principal, a director of special education and pupil services, hence teach cross-categorical special education and alternative education. He started his teaching career at Molesny High School as a special ed teacher. In 2016, he started with the Eau Claire Area School District at North High. He worked at North for one year as a special ed teacher and two years as an alternative ed teacher. He coached both cross-country and Special Olympics during this time. Justin left to work for the Chippewa Falls School District as Dean of Students and Athletic Director for the 2020-2021 school year. He is now returning to North Star Middle School as the assistant principal and athletic director starting with the 2021-2022 school year. Alicia Kirkman graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Oclare in 2012 with a Bachelor's degree in education. She majored in elementary ed and special ed. She also earned a Master's degree in educational leadership from St. Mary's University of Minnesota in 2018. Alicia holds licenses through the Wisconsin DPI to work as a principal and teach regular and cross-categorical special ed in middle childhood through early adolescence. She began her teaching career at Hillside Elementary, the New Richmond School District. She worked as a special education teacher from 2012-2018. In 2018, she moved to the district behavior coach position with New Richmond. She is currently working in this role, as well as working as the district remote learning coordinator and interim principal for Hillside Elementary. Alicia will be joining the Eau Claire Area School District as the assistant principal serving both Robbins Elementary and Sherman Elementary in 2021-2022. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, I'd just like to welcome our three new administrators. We wish you the best of luck, and we expect great things out of you. Thank you for joining us. We'll now move on to our individually considered items. We have three tonight. The first is the adoption of our governance policies. The board has been working over the past year to develop new governing policies for the school board and moving forward as a group. You'll recall, of course, that we had this as a discussion item last time as the maybe culmination of many work sessions throughout the past year. Tonight is our opportunity to share final thoughts, any last-minute amendments, and then hopefully take a vote to approve the adopt policies. So before I ask for a motion on this item, I'll just open the floor to any of the commissioners who would like to weigh in with a thought or an amendment. Dr. Johnson.
So after much consideration, I will be voting against the adoption of a coherent governance model for the Eau Claire Area School District School Board. I support elements of this model, which include school board meeting efficiencies, attempts at outcome measures via monitoring reports, and a delineated role for both the school board and the superintendent. Perhaps going through this particular process and having an opportunity with other school boards and surrounding districts, it is still unclear to me that this proposed model allows for school boards to address immediate issues and our concerns that arise during a typical academic school year. For example, recent issues, concerns such as snow days converted to virtual learning days, current SRO policies, disproportionality of school discipline policies, teacher-staff concerns, really kind of where I want to target some of the efforts, BEAs and SEAs concerns as it relates to the district, would be relegated to some predetermined monitoring reports instead of the demand for immediate attention. That still remains a huge concern about adoption of this model. It is also unclear to me that monitoring reports elicit the sense of urgency for change that is needed to address some of the systemic issues facing our district. Monitoring reports appear to shield both school board members at times and administrators from being intentional agents of change to meet matters of significance at a particular time. So with that, I appreciate the work that my colleagues have put in to the construction of this model, but I will have to vote against it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lyons.
So I will be voting for it. And while I share some of Dr. Johnson's critical thinking, I do believe, and I've heard from other school boards, that this is a way of really focusing the board's time and effort in a way that's at a 30,000-foot level. And I appreciate that, and I know it's going to be a work in progress, and I know it's going to be a journey, and I know that there's going to be some issues. But I believe after having gone down this path, that it's one that will guide us in a more focused way, and I'm willing to move out of that path. Although I do share some of your critical advice.
Commissioner Harder.
Yeah, I'll also be voting in favor of this. And while, yeah, likewise, I share a lot of the concerns that Commissioner Johnson mentioned. My hope is that those things won't stop happening. Those influences and those incidents and things that we need to react to in a more of a real-time manner and less of a 30,000-foot manner will continue to be something that the board considers. But it'll be, my hope is and expectation is that it will be increasingly, as we get better at this, put into a context where we can be effective in understanding those issues and dealing with them. I mean, the, I don't, those concerns aren't going to go away. I hope the public won't stop talking to us because of this change. I trust they won't. And likewise, our leadership team here, the board and the superintendent, will, I hope, will continue to take those issues seriously as they come up, things that can't be anticipated in a operational expectations report schedule. But I guess as Commissioner Lyons mentioned, it will be a work in progress. And, but I'm going to vote yes in, with some optimism that it's a step in the right direction, and that it won't be perfect, but that I think it is a step in the right direction in terms of focusing pressures, board attention, in the places where it can be most effective and hopefully helpful to our students.
Commissioner Zur.
So, I think what I am, everything that Dr. Johnson just articulated are the things that make me incredibly nervous about this. And I, I don't like change much. It's not my favorite thing. But I think that in order to do hard things, we have to put ourselves in positions that we're uncomfortable with, and we have to be willing to try something new. And what we've been doing in this district, in a lot of ways, has not served all of our kids to the best that it can. And what I am excited about is that through this governance model, that we will see clearly articulated the goals and the long-term vision for our district, and we will be constantly checking in on it. We will be constantly focused on every little, every decision that we make, everything that's being done, what to what end does it serve? And if it doesn't serve one of those ends, then why are we doing this? Then why are we spending the money? Why are we spending the resources? Why are we asking more and more and more of our staff? If it's not serving the end? And I think that we have to be focused somewhere, and we have to be focused on a plan that we're all working towards. And I think that, then I am excited to hear, first of all, what is that plan? What are those goals? Where are we going? What are the things that we're driving towards? And then collaboratively working, the board as representatives of the community and the administration as the keepers of that trust, to collaborate, to get it done. And I think that this is as good a shot as we can give it. And I think that it's well-crafted, and that's kudos to you. That's kudos to the commissioners who worked so hard on this. But also a testament to the commitment of our administrative team to say that we can, that they're willing to meet our challenge and they're willing to work on this with us. And so I, with, you know, with trepidation, with nerves, with kind of a bit of uncertainty, I think it's the right move. And I'm excited to give it a shot and lean into it and grow with it and see where we take it and how good, how good can we make it? But I'll be supporting it.
Commissioner Clements.
Thank you, Dr. Nordean. So, I approach this as a living governance process or governance model. It's not, we're not etching something on a tablet saying this is how everything is going to go. And it will be a process of, frankly, of muddling through as we get to know it as individual persons and as we figure out how it functions, how it functions well and how it functions less well. I value that Commissioner Johnson has some very significant concerns because that is able to help us focus our minds on how do we make this work for all of us. I would be more concerned if everyone was just like, yep, it's good, everything's going to be great, and we have no concerns. So, and I do share many of the concerns that Commissioner Johnson has in terms of how do we address the various things that come up throughout the year? How do we, as the elected persons, exercise that role effectively? And I think the answer is we'll have to find out. And we'll have to trust that we can work with one another to do that and also know that we maintain all of the other roles that we have as board members to exercise governance. This is just essentially telling ourselves how we're going to conduct business. And I trust that if something comes up, like the many things that have come up in the past 18 months or so that have shown our current model to not necessarily be up to the task, that we'll be able to figure it out. And so I have support over, for the process that we arrived at this point. Still being a relatively new board member, this conversation has been ongoing for some time. It's not perfect, and I don't expect it to be. But I think that it's going to work for us. I expect it will. And we need to continue to make sure that the concerns that Commissioner Johnson shared and that many others have agreed with, we continue to figure out how do we address those values also.
Seeing no other requests for floor, I would ask for a motion to adopt the completed set of governing policies and appropriately refer all current board policies to the superintendent for use in the day-to-day operations of the Eau Claire Area School District.
So moved.
Second?
By Commissioner Harder, second by Dr. Becca, for clarity. Although I don't think there's a lot of suspense left in this vote. But Mina, if you would do this by roll call, please.
Commissioner Becca?
An enthusiastic yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
I guess an enthusiastic no.
Commissioner, Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Motion requires two-thirds and has carried. We will adopt those policies as our governing model. I guess at the end of tonight's meeting, maybe we could have reordered the agenda. We'll finish out the agenda tonight, and then that will go to adoption. And thank you to all of my colleagues on the board for your work throughout the year. Dr. Johnson, your dissent is noted, but you also worked on this, and I know, and I appreciate that work, even though you had disagreements and some fundamental worries. And I echo what all my colleagues said, that those are things that we will need to attend to and figure out how to work with, because those are not things that are, are things that we want to leave behind. But again, thank you to everybody. Thank you to everyone on the administrative staff who worked on these policies. Thank you for, to the community who gave input on many sections of them, especially on weighing in on our results expected for the district. That's one of the biggest roles. That is the role of the board, is to voice the community's expectation of what do we want our students to be like when they finish in the Eau Claire Area School District. So, I'm grateful for everyone's work, and we look forward to starting this new journey together. It will take a lot of work from both the board and the administration, but I believe that we're up to the task. Move on to our next item in the agenda tonight, which is the job and labor market review. I believe this is Kay and Abby that will be presenting.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So the board. There we go. Oops. Two minutes. First time driver, I should have the student student driver sticker on my presentation here. So the board approved the I'm sorry, the board was presented with the job description and labor market review update back in January by Abby and I on the January 4th school board meeting, and then they followed up with the recommendation that we had on January 18th. So at that point in time, the board approved the then 209 FTE for a total of $187,628.11. So what happened at that point in time is after the board approved those 209 FTE, the HR team communicated with all employees that were holding the 26 positions that you see on your screen here that were involved in that labor market review process. And we communicated the results of what that review looked like. If the position that they held had been approved for an increase in the salary grade, the employee was notified of their new placement on the salary schedule. Questions and feedback from employees resulted in further consultation with our vendor regarding the process that was used to transition employees onto the new salary grade. After multiple meetings, numerous calculations, we had determined a couple of different things. First, we determined that the original recommendation that the vendor had shared with us provided or it provided that they had provided us included a transition for employees onto the salary grade that knowingly to the vendor, but obviously not to the district, slowed down or stopped at the advancement of the employees' wages. Obviously, like I said, this was not known to the district at the time, but apparently many organizations who participate in similar reviews utilized that transitional process as a way to save their organization money. Secondly, it was assumed that our district was looking to use that same process. However, after we thought through all of the data, looked at all of the calculations, it was evident to administration that we were not in favor of the transitional process as it was detrimental to our current employees and was not it was not what was intended when the board had created policy 513s. And we had put that in place, which was the labor market review and the the labor market review process that we were going through at that point in time. So.
Thanks, Kay. Um, so tonight we wanted to come forward with an updated proposal. And so I wanted to articulate what the changes are from the original proposal. So on the screen, you can see that the change in FTE from the original, you can see that there are 7.40625 additional FTE in addition to what was originally approved back on January 18th. That stems from the fact that we returned to a four day a week instructional model. And in addition, many of those positions were vacant when this original proposal was sent to the board in January. So that's why there was a change in the FTE. And you can see that most of those positions were in the SEA position, which I know Mandy Van Lee would concur that we had to fill some of those positions with students returning to school. And some of them are just in transient when the proposal was originally presented in January. Secondly, the original approved proposal was not level for level, as Kay mentioned before. So the cost impact was less. As you can see, the additional cost of level for level will be $294,661.67 in total. Now, the food and nutrition piece will be paid from Fund 50, which is not part of our operating dollars. And so you can see that that total increase in the wages that will impact our operating fund is the 438,72910 in the column that says proposed increase in annual wage. In addition, we always like to present the cost of estimated benefits when we are talking about salaries and wage increases. And so you can see that the estimated cost with the benefits of the updated proposal is $554,633.13. And so that's the total impact we expect to see on the 2021 budget. That is all that we have to share tonight. We are open for questions.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you to Abby. Questions or comments for board members? Commissioner Lyons.
Could we go back to the the fringe benefit slide? Yeah. So the salary is 294,000. The fringe is only 44,000.
Yeah, because the fringe would just be the fringe benefit. So it would just be the social security and the WRS, because all of the other benefits are already included in the salary projection. So this is just the percentage benefits that would change.
Okay, so the salary is salary and benefits of the 294.
No, that is just the cost of the salary increase. The 294 is the what the hourly wage was before, what the person was making. And then the 294 is the change to the recommended new salary grade level.
I have more questions.
You have the floor, is your.
So the the first slide talked about an annual review.
Yes.
Is it is that new?
It is.
Okay.
This this is the first time that we've gone through this process. And related to COVID, we are so this group was actually set to be completed in the 1920 school year. And because of COVID and closing down and our consulting closing down, we didn't get the actual results until October of 2020, I believe.
Yep, we're we're over a year.
Yeah, we're a year behind in this process, and that's why you first saw this first group in January of 2021.
So there will be an annual review of all employees and where they land in the labor market? Or is it just the primarily the hourly employees that don't necessarily fit into and I I call it a coup de code. But a a certain job code, is that is.
No, every every year, there will be a review of a specific set of positions. We review their job description and then work to see whether or not the job description is still accurate based upon what the district is asking that position to do. And then we compare that with the labor market to see if the salary grade is still appropriate for that position. And if it if it changes needed, then it goes to the board for an upgrade. So this is the first year. These positions are the ones that were reviewed in the first year, which again should have been done already, but this is the first group. And then next year, which is actually taking place now, there's positions that are like in the hopper now that are being worked on and reviewed. And then those positions will come forward. That's another set of hourly positions. And then the third year is some non affiliated positions. I think the fourth year is the certified group. And then the fifth year is administrative positions. And then it starts over the cycle again in the first year, which would technically be the sixth year, to start this group over again. So that the district is always making sure that job descriptions are up to date and accurate every five years in a cycle, so that we don't get so far behind that jobs are no longer relevant for labor market or what we're asking the asking of the position.
Right, so my my concern is that this is just the tip of the iceberg, correct? That the 294 and the 44 and the fringe benefits, 330 is is one segment, and there's multiple segments that will be coming as well.
That is correct. One of the reasons why this group was the first group, there's a lot of FTE allocated to this with the hourly group. And some of these positions, we know we already had concerns with as far as the adequate labor market salary grade. And so Kay and I spent a lot of time going through this and reviewing. And by we believe that this is the largest group and the most number of hourly employees that are impacted in year one. And that was purposeful on our end.
Knowing that our SEAs and our BEAs were the largest population of hourly employees, not only were they the most hard to fill positions, but knowing from working with these positions in the past years that they were also in all likelihood, probably the most not only hard to fill, but have the potential to be the ones that were most in need of a set of potential salary grade increase, which is why these positions were placed in the first year of the review so that we could get them addressed with the vendor as quickly as possible.
So my last question.
I'm sorry.
My last question would be, where are we funding this from? Can we afford?
So that's a great question. It would really come out of the general operating budget. And so with the exception of putting the food nutrition piece, because that's funded out of Fund 50, which is run like a business. So that was one of the discussions that we had as an administrative team. And how would that look and how would that go forward? And so we added that to we'll figure it out as we're going through the budget.
Thanks. Commissioner Zer.
Can I ask a practical question? It's a point of clarification for me. We will never see this presentation again in this way. Am I am I correct now?
No.
Like the how will we?
It's not correct.
Okay, so to explain it, will we is this one that we will see?
Yeah, the board has reserved for itself changes to employee salaries and benefits. So whether it's exactly, it probably will be in this case, since it's like a big group thing. It may be, you know, in the future, these changes may be lumped together and say, you know, we want any changes A, B, and C.
Got it.
But the board has reserved in the in the policy set salary benefits for all employees, as well as the handbook and superintendent's.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just wondered if that was I wondered if that was included.
We will have this and we will we will actually be working very shortly, but just actually slot it into the annual calendar so that we know exactly where it's going to come up.
That's where weddings.
Right, it is. The the calendar is not full yet right now.
Right.
That's what you said is monitoring, but we will be building it out. So these these types of things we will continue to see.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry. Another question for you guys. Wonderful presentation. Thank you.
There are no additional comments or questions. We adhere to a motion to approve the modified job description and labor market review proposal.
I guess I have one. I'm sorry, I have one more thing. So do you guys have, Kay, do you have the where where are the where are these positions then? In slide one, you showed us the the pay level. Do you have an updated version of that that we can see the salary grade level that this that the proposal increases? Is does it changing salary grade level? What you see in the slide right before you, that that's accurate. It's changing. This is what you've already approved. For example, special education assistance were on salary grade six. The recommendation is to move them to salary grade seven. That stays the same. So that piece you already you've already approved. What we're modifying is how employees are moving from salary grade six to salary grade seven. So the transition, you're changing the transitional process. What it was in the first, what you approved the first time was moving them from level six to level seven. You were moving them, the transition process moved them backward on salary grade seven to the lowest level that gave them an increase. So for some people who are SEAs, they may have only gotten a one cent increase. Instead of moving them if they're on level F on the salary schedule, just moving them to level F on salary grade seven. And recognizing that they've been in the district, working this job all along, and the job hasn't changed. Just the value of the job has changed. So so they're not moving to a new job, learning a new job. The value of the job has changed because it's now become more valuable to what the district had placed the value of the job previously. So that's what's changing in this in this recommendation is how people are transitioned into that new salary grade. Not that not that the first recommendation you approved is changing with salary grades. That piece stays the same.
But Kay, just to be clear, this will rectify some of those situations where people got a one cent or a nickel raise that will actually improve that, right? So people won't be being told you're getting a rate of grade. That is helpful to note. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great clarification. Thank you, Kay. You're welcome.
Any additional comments or questions? Dr. Johnson.
Would it be possible to 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 include in these presentations actually an examination of the labor market reviews and stuff?
Yeah.
So I'm 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 really interested in terms of as the the speaker spoke about the level of level of retention, the level of dropout, where where do we stand in terms of comparison? You know, I I the the improvement of grade level, I guess, is fine. I'm not really, you know, the dollar amount is collective over the entire group, not on an individual basis. But I'm just curious as it pertains to to inform my decision making and our feedback going forward. I actually I actually see some data and I would like to see a regional regional data close proximity to us and are the extent of districts are are similar size. And another another piece that I would I would request, and maybe it's in there, and I I hadn't done enough enough digging here, but really, what are the opportunities for for growth? Aside the years of experience? One of the things that, you know, I I'm I'm going to want to explore a little bit more is how do we utilize, especially amongst the the BEAs who are the most diverse group of employees that we actually have in the school district? How do we employ not figure out a way not only to keep them in our particular district, but also develop mechanisms for potential growth? I've had an opportunity to actually speak with the BEAs three multiple times throughout the throughout the academic year. And, you know, the when they describe what they do on a daily basis, you know, I think we not only do we owe this to them, but we also owe opportunities for professional growth that maybe they can grow within our our district as may maybe as teachers, maybe there are some other avenues that alternative avenues to teacher licensure that we can explore as a district to support support these teachers within would in improve their standing from a salary perspective as well. So I I guess in in future, my recommendation and our would it be considered that we actually see the labor labor market reports that they're actually utilizing to the basis?
If I recall correctly, and Kay and Abby, please correct me, I I think that was included in the in the original. I remember seeing this is where Eau Claire was versus our versus peer groups and versus region. And this is where we will be after the adjustment. So I I feel like that that part was included in the original presentation. This is just an update because of the way that was transitioned over. Although maybe we would like to have had it with again to just re review, but am I wrong? Didn't we get that the last time? But am I wrong? Didn't we get that the last time?
No, that piece wasn't in there. To me, I've been thinking way back when we did the compensation plan, that all of that information was in there, very detailed information. And that, I mean, that, we can get that piece in, you know, future. You know, in the future, when we present this information. We can, we can have that in, in those future presentations. The second piece that Dr. Johnson is talking about feels to me like it's a separate piece than, than this piece in terms of the approval of the salary grade transition. I mean, it's certainly something that we can look at moving forward, but, but it seems like that's a separate piece than this in terms of the professional development of some of these positions.
Yeah, what do you think?
Understanding.
No, and that, and that, and that's fine. But I, I think it's one of the, one of the challenges that you have, especially when individuals appear to be stuck in a salary position. And they, they enjoy what they do, but feel like they're undercompensated. One of, one of the ways that you potentially improve morale, morale and education is huge, is what are those other opportunities for growth in terms of the increase of the salary? But I thank you for that feedback. Thank you.
Questions or?
You had, you had written it for me.
Oh. Mr. Lyons. So there's no compression issues on this because the, the number of FTEs in these positions are all of the positions in that job type, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the 20 clubs, there's, there's no one that would be moving backward in the salary scale because we're raising the salary of all clubs?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, great. How many more categories of employees are coming? And you said that you were working on them currently. Is the, is the increase going to be similar? So are we seeing bigger numbers because these are our positions that should have been reviewed? Or is there an anomaly in their pay? And I guess why I'm asking is if we make the decision tonight to raise this group of employees, then I think that systematically, we're making a commitment to every group of people that we're going to be reviewing down the line. Because we've done it for this particular group. And I feel like I don't necessarily have all the information because I don't know what those increases are going to be coming down the road. But I feel like I'm approving it tonight because we're doing it for this particular group. Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense. Your brain works a lot like my, like mine does. And those were discussions that we had administratively as well because I raised some of the same concerns. What, what we learned, and I'm trying to find it right here, is that the next cycle is many, it's less positions, but there, most of the positions have one to two people in them. So this year one was by far the largest year of the number of positions and the number of impacted people. And so it's really hard for us to predict the dollar amount that it would look like for years, you know, the rest of the upcoming years. And so, but as we've been working through this, and please keep in mind, we've had multiple conversations about this, you know, sense that concerns were raised to us. I know I've taken a lot of Mr. Johnson and Ms. Mark's time just reevaluating. I've worked with HR and had them do numerous calculations of different ways of what, what could this look like and what should it look like for that exact reason? Because it's precedent setting, for sure. And so I wanted to make sure from the business standpoint, how is that going to impact going forward? But we know that this year is the largest number. I believe we have about 440, about 440 FTE, that's hourly staff. And so when you look at this proposal tonight, that's impacting 216, that's almost half of them. The other thing, Mr. Lyons, that we can look at is on the HR department website, there's the, the kind of the cycle of which positions are going to be reviewed. So the review that's happening right now is like in accounting, it's in the custodians, it's in the payroll department. So a lot of different positions. There are some positions, our maintenance and our tradespeople. I mean, there's some that we suspect that there will be some modifications necessary. We just don't know what they are yet because as Kay shared earlier, that's in the process and ongoing right now. So that job description review is what's happening right now. So I don't, can we guarantee that the numbers aren't going to be as large? Absolutely not. When we look at, you know, the types of positions, we don't expect as many changes, but we do expect some. But again, until we, until we get that recommendation from the outside consultant, it's very hard for us to know and predict what is that going to look like? Other than we know that it will be evaluated once every five years.
And then this time I would ask again for a motion to approve the modified job description and labor market review as presented.
So.
Second?
Second?
Thank you. And if this is a financial item, we need to do it by roll call vote. So Maida, if you would proceed.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
No.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move on to our next item, the employee ad hoc committee charge and timeline.
All right. This presentation is a reflection of what we worked on as far as budget development goes. So Commissioner Harder talked earlier tonight that our last budget development committee had a lot of conversations about an ad hoc committee and what would that look like? And so we wanted to share this presentation with the full board in an effort to try and, and get some feedback and some discussion with the group. So the committee worked on a proposed charge. And that proposed charge is that the charge of the committee shall be to review, study, and discuss ECASD compensation packages, package options with a financial goal to achieve a sustainable and balanced budget. The holistic ad hoc committee shall meet and provide reports and recommendations for the full board to approve on an as needed basis. The committee shall conclude by October 31st, 2021. Part of our conversation was what is the definition of a sustainable and balanced budget? And the budget development committee said that would be not spending more than the district is getting in revenue. Some additional questions that we discussed was the financial goal of the review is to achieve a sustainable and balanced budget. And so again, that previous definition that I just shared of sustainable and balanced was determined to be not spending more than the district is getting in revenue. Some other things that the committee discussed was the timing of the report. There was a lot of conversation around December 31st, 2021. However, that created some challenges related to our upcoming health insurance and the bids that we plan to solicit for health insurance that would be in effect from July 1st of 2022, beginning at that point in time. I think I shared with the committee that the bids for health insurance need to go out at the end of November or early December. And so by having this report not presented to the board until the end of December would cause a challenge with that. Another concern related to the timing is the referendum discussion and the referendum timeline. You know, that was paused due to the pandemic and wanting to do some things a little bit differently. And so that was part of our conversation of how does that timing of this ad hoc committee and reports impact that potential referendum timeline? And then again, like I spoke before, we talked about how it impacted the health insurance bid process for July 1st, 2022. That's why we came up with the timing of the report to the board by October 31st, 2021. Another thing that budget development discussed was the committee membership. And the committee membership would start with asking the original OPAP ad hoc committee members if they want to continue and help us on this next phase of the journey. We would look for employees that are eligible for the OPAP benefit and the defined contribution as well. And then we would also look to have a representative from each building. Another piece of the conversation that we had about the development was how does the implementation of coherent governance impact this committee and what, how does that impact the work that the committee does? We did talk a little bit about sequencing and kind of a timeline of what we would do with this committee. And so at the first, the first meeting, we talked a bit about just educating the committee on the charge and the purpose, and then potentially draft survey questions that could be shared with all employees. On the second meeting, we would work to finalize that employee survey and that we would get it ready to, again, send to all of our staff. On the third meeting, we would look to share that employee survey data, solicit any additional feedback, and then develop and refine potential options to present to the school board. And then the fourth meeting, we would provide final input and feedback on the options presented to the school board. And if there was a need, we would have an additional meeting based upon the committee's recommendation before presenting to the school board. So the budget development, along with us, kind of talked about what would the next steps potentially be? And we envisioned that to be contacting the original ad hoc committee members to see if they want to continue this work. Then we would put an application in the district update seeking additional members, sharing the charge and what the committee's work would potentially look like. When that process was completed, the school board president and superintendent would determine the final committee membership. And we would anticipate potentially a first meeting happening in May before the end of the year to provide some of that background information and give some homework before we break for the summer. So with that, what questions does the school board have? And then we'd like to answer those. And then if the committee wanted to, if the school board wanted to vote on next steps or anything, we would take that at this time.
Thank you, Abby. And thank you to the members of the budget development committee for your work on bringing this forward. I'll open the floor now to comments or questions. And hearing done, I would also hear a motion to approve the committee charge and timeline. I would motion to approve the proposed charge as written with the accompanying timeline. Period.
Second?
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Let's just keep it clear by doing another roll call, Maida. That'll be our theme.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
The motion carries. This time we'll adjourn to our committee reports. We have one item tonight, that is the LEAP Zone proposal presentation for Acres for Joy. I believe that's Jim Schmidt and Crystal Rosika.
Thank you, President Nordine. So nearly two years ago, the learning environments and partnerships for LEAP Zone's Policy 332 was approved by the school board. This change has streamlined the process for innovation zones in the district. Last year at this time, the board also revised its Board and District Committees Policy 185, which employs the structure of the LEAP committee. Since that time, LEAP has not brought a new proposal to you until tonight. I'm pleased to introduce Crystal Rosika. She's a teacher on a special assignment at South Middle School. She's also a member of the LEAP committee who is in her second year of a trauma psychology doctoral program. Seventeen months ago, Crystal and then Principal Paul Ure formally introduced Acres for Joy to the school board tonight. Crystal will share with you the progress that has been made to bring this evidence-based strategy to all district secondary schools facilitated by the new LEAP proposal process. You'll notice in the materials, and I have them in front of you, the phases of the LEAP process. This is the exhibit from Policy 332. You'll notice two documents, one for phase one. And then we should have brought it to you when we met 17 months ago had we known this would have been part of a LEAP process. So that's actually step 1.4 with the narrative. And also one for phase two of the process. And Crystal will highlight that when she does a presentation tonight, which is steps 2.3 and 2.4. The journey to get to this evening's presentation is a little unusual because South Middle School has already been piloting Acres for Joy with their students since 2016. As a result, the new LEAP process has been accelerated due to the foundation South was built. Also joining us this evening are administrative representatives from each of our secondary schools who are prepared to answer questions you might have after Crystal presents. So with that, I'll let Crystal walk you through the Acres for Joy process, and I will drive the presentation.
Thank you so much, Jim Schmidt. And thank you all for being here and for listening to a presentation on what has definitely had my heart for the last five years. So thank you for your time. We've named the program, the REAL Program, which stands for Ranch and Equine Assisted Learning. It's also the place where we get real and we stay real. And that is something that is central to what we are bringing to our students when we go out to the ranch and when we come back into the building of the school. So just to remind you of our alignment to our strategic plan and to show you some, some fun pictures of all of us in action. The population and the purpose that we have is we're serving secondary students who are at risk emotionally, academically, and/or behaviorally. Though we, our population is students without individual education plans, we do actually have students with IEPs. Our, our purpose is to get to students who don't have any adults in the building that are currently serving as a case manager. So, but for social emotional reasons, students with IEPs may be part of the program. We also want to close the achievement gap that we've spent the last couple of years talking about and its importance. And obviously, we want success for all students. So this is where we're at, at phase two. So I'm going to be in step 2.3 and 2.4 here, presenting the performance agreement to you and a little bit, a little bit of a history. I believe Dr. Harder was the only board member who was there when I presented last time. Though I won't go into the psychology in this presentation of why we choose horses as part of this program. Certainly, you can ask me questions or reach out to me at any time for that information. We'll also give you the opportunity to provide feedback and ask questions. So as an overview of our performance agreement, we are looking to expand the ranch program. For the past few years, it's just been South Middle School. This year, we added DeLonge and North Star and McKinley. And next year, we would like to propose that we add Memorial. We actually on Friday hosted Kurt and Luke out at, from North High School, out at the ranch. And they have interest in starting next year instead of waiting until 2022, 2023, after they saw the programming and the students in action out there. So hopefully, North will be joining us next year as well. Each group session, when the school goes out, is two hours total. That includes travel time. It's 90 minutes boots on the ground and the ranch. And the student achievement specialist attends with the students and carries the lessons into the school environment. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. The program started with Ignite. And that was a partnership that Diana Ziegers, our former principal from South Middle School, began with Jeff Jackson and myself. And Jeff Jackson owns the Acres for Joy Ranch. And Jeff Jackson owns the Acres for Joy Ranch. He created the ranch for his daughter, Abigail Joy Jackson, who was a former student of the Eau Claire School District. She passed away in her senior year as a student at Memorial as a result of complications of an eating disorder and diabetes. And he dedicated the property to bringing joy and hope to adolescents with the purpose of growing and celebrating their successes. He is a physician's assistant in behavioral health and has a personal story that he shares with the students of choices that he made out of high school that led to a story of triumph and resiliency. And the students really resonate with that. So as we connected with him, we began this summer school program. And the students were chosen based on at-risk behaviors and teacher recommendation. And we created curriculum to explicitly teach social emotional skills. And we were looking at leadership qualities. And what we tell our students who participate in the program is that they were chosen because someone saw the leadership qualities that they had within them and wanted them to have the opportunity to grow those leadership qualities so that they can serve at their best selves, not only in middle school or high school, but beyond. And obviously, we're looking for success in all areas, not just academic, but also behavioral, social, emotional as well. We, the Ignite program was wildly successful. We had quantitative data to show that the students were, had really their office discipline referrals dropped, their attendance increased, their social emotional skills increased as reported by self-reflection of the students. And but what we noticed is that after that summer program, the impact of the ranch program diminished over the course of the year without continued programming. And it was at that time that Diana Ziegers recommended that there be a full-time position of for a student achievement specialist formerly called a success coach that would take the students out to the ranch throughout the school year and then carry those lessons back into the four walls of the building. I say a lot of times when I explain this that we make deposits on the ranch that we can use for withdrawals within the school. And that works really well for both teachers and the students that are in the program. So the student achievement specialist works with staff to identify students who are at the tier-two level, which means that our universal tier-one strategies are not, are not necessarily bringing the student to the level of success that we believe that they're capable of. We have entrance and exit criteria for the program that is specific. And we have tier-two interventions such as guided minis that go along with these, that go along with the ranch program. So there's interventions happening within the school as well. Social, emotional, behavioral, and academic support, the tier-two team within the school comes around these students and helps them in all of these areas. And then the idea is that the student achievement specialist has a degree or a license in alternative education so that they understand how to best support students in alternate ways. So we've partnered with Acres for Joy. We have academic expectations. We tell the students that it is not necessary to be passing all of your classes to be accepted into the program. In fact, though we don't specify this, typically, none of the students are passing all of their classes when they're accepted into the program. But the expectation is that they're working to maintain passing grades once they're in the program. We also have attendance expectations. We talk a lot of times about no one is perfect and we don't expect perfection. But we do have specific attendance expectations such as we wouldn't want to see more than three unexcused absences in a quarter. We have curriculum that's been built over the last few years for the REAL Program. It centers around relationship skills, boundaries, forgiveness, honesty, character, attitude, all of the things that, that our students want to talk about and want to learn about and is, are important for them to be able to build that foundation of success. And then not only do we do team building with the students together, but they do service on the ranch. So they do service projects for both the ranch and the community and build on their relationship skills through that. One more picture for you. Look at those smiles. So we have data. We have qualitative data and we have quantitative data. And so our quantitative data is here for you. I'll give you a moment to just look at it as I talk through it with you. You can see we started, the 2018, 2019 data is from our first year with a student achievement specialist. Started with 21 students, 49 failing grades at entrance. So those are 49 classes that were graded at an F. By the, by third quarter, the end of third quarter, 19 of the 21 students were passing all of their classes. And at exit, there were only five failing grades. There were remarkably 198 days of absence at the entrance and two days of absence at exit. In fact, a student would tell you if you asked her, who was counted in that too, that she was very upset about the dentist appointment that took her out of school. For one of those two days, she asked her mom to reschedule it, and her mom was unable to. In 2019 and 2020, we had 18 students and 66 failing grades at entrance. By the end of third quarter, 13 students were passing all of their classes and only six failing grades at exit. And we went from 156 days of absence down to six. Finally, for this year, we have 64 students, a beautiful jump that, that reflects the fact that we now have McKinley and North Star and DeLonge. And of the three of those four schools that are calculating grades as part of entrance and exit criteria, we had 80 failing grades at entrance. And by the end of third quarter, 24 students were passing all of their classes. Put a little double asterisk there because this year, we did not start the program due to COVID-19 until end of second quarter. So while you're seeing the data here, that's from only one quarter that there were 24 students who are now passing classes versus the last two years, where by the end of third quarter, students had participated for three quarters of the school year. We don't have a number of failing grades at exit, exit yet because we're still going. But we do have the fact that we had 82 days of absent at entrance. And we know already that that will be remarkably different because of some student successes that we have already. Some qualitative data that I would love to, or that I would love to share with you. One student improved attendance this year by 100%. Yes, that's right. The student went from zero days of attendance to 100% attendance for the last three weeks. We, he started only coming on ranch days for a while. And we told him in order to continue going to the ranch, he did need to come on Mondays and Tuesdays, not just Tuesdays. And he has for the last three weeks been there on Mondays and Tuesdays. One student who experienced selective mutism spoke during school hours for the first time in four months while at the ranch, then led a team verbally as they navigated a complicated service-based task. One student who had seven out of seven grades as a D or F ended up qualifying for the Regional National History Day and presented his project at UW Eau Claire to rave reviews from the judges. One student attending for social emotional purposes confided in her student achievement specialist about a sexual assault. Then a year later testified in the trial related to the incident. She requested her student achievement specialist be the adult who accompanied her in the courtroom. One student who held the most office discipline referrals at South for a sixth grader ended her seventh and eighth grade years with no office discipline referrals and is now a junior at Memorial with a 3.5 GPA, taking AP classes and planning to be a veterinarian or a lawyer. Finally, one student was chosen this year as the Boys and Girls Club Teen of the Year, a student who has participated since she was in sixth grade and is now an eighth grader. I came up with these experiences, these qualitative experiences, probably in about 10 minutes off the top of my head. There are so many stories that I could spend much longer than we have telling you about the, the impact that this program has had on our Eau Claire Area School District students. Every student in the qualitative data examples I just gave you represents a diverse group, whether that be race, socioeconomic status, or both. Finally, we invite you to come out. The best way to experience the ranch is to be there. We, you are always welcome. You don't even need to let us know ahead of time. You can just show up. And we are out there from 9 o'clock until 11:30, 11:40 on Tuesdays and Fridays. This week will be the last week. Unfortunately, that DeLonge and North Star will be able to participate because of the schedules for when we're coming back on the 26th full-time. The teachers who have participated will be teaching during those times, and so they won't be able to continue. But South is able to continue, McKinley is able to continue. So you're more, more than welcome to come out and see what we're all about out there. Before I open it up for questions, I just want to recognize the, the teachers who have participated in this program this year who have made this possible. Allison Martin is a French teacher at DeLonge who brought the DeLonge students out. Meg Jenny is a fax teacher, and along with Jen Junker, the partnership coordinator, they brought the students out from North Star. Danielle Stanley brought the students out from South Middle School, and she is our reading teacher. Beth Gardo is from McKinley, and she's been bringing our McKinley students out. We've had the most amazing bus drivers in Chrissy and Mike. Brandon has helped. And then a thank you to, to Jim Schmidt, Jenna Matisse, and our principals and assistant principals who have helped us this year. Finally, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you might have about this process. And we hope that you like what you see here and want it to continue.
So I do want to make a couple of follow-up comments before I take questions. In the documents, I just got to try to navigate around WebEx here. The, you received for both an initial document and this performance agreement step four. It really talks about the student achievement specialist, and you saw some of the numbers in the executive summary for the, in board docs. Something that came to mind about the student, the, the specialist is that each of the buildings at the secondary level, they do have interventionist allocations already identified. And this role is, this is going to be included within their role. So this is not new FTE. This is FTE that already exists within the building. It's just assigning this task to that. And as Crystal said, the bulk of the work is done in the building. The, the ranch is a very, very small part, a very incentive-based component. But a lot of that is that hard work is done throughout the building. So when you see those FTE, again, it was not something that's new. It's just something that has been reassigned within their allocation for interventions. And so a lot of those details are built into the document. And you're welcome during your questions to ask questions about the presentation or the document or the experience that any of the secondary schools, as we mentioned. Each of them has been elected to be on the call in case you have questions.
Thank you. Comments and questions, board members? Commissioner Harder?
Yep. Well, thank you for this presentation. Thanks especially for, for doing this work. I, I was, I remember Acres of Joy from being on the LEAP Committee. And of course, the, the presentation we had over a year ago. I'm really excited to see programming like this move forward in the district. I, I think we need more of it. I'd be very happy to see the proposed expansions happen for Acres of Joy. And I'm, I'm grateful to, to Crystal and everybody who works, who's worked on this to, to make it happen and make it grow.
Dr. Johnson?
I'd just like to say I, I support any efforts that are made within our school district to identify alternative approaches to keep our students engaged in that educational process, especially if it leads to the completion of, of, of their education. So I, I applaud those efforts. And as much as I would actually like to, to visit live animals on the farm, actually, did not actually sit well with Dr. Johnson. If someone were to go there live and actually virtually put me inside of it, I would visit alone. So, Crystal, I appreciate your effort, but I just can't do live animals. So, but yeah, if someone would be there and do like a live version, log me in, I would actually. They did part that way, so thank you.
So I'll jump in here and say that I've been peed on by worse things than a goat. So I, I will make it a point to come out to the farm at some point. And Dr. Johnson, if you'd like me to FaceTime you at that point, I will carry you around with me on my shoulder. And you can, you can see it from my view. So yeah, of course, we're, we're thrilled to see this. And in that we just adopted a new governance model tonight, I will note that under OE4, Student Success Point 8, our expectation for the administration is encouraging new and innovative programs and practices, carefully monitoring and evaluating the effectiveness of all such programs and practices, at least annually. It seems like we're well on our way to that step, at least in this program. So of course, the board already, just by virtue of the policy we've written, supports this idea. So thank you for that work. Are there other comments or questions from board members? Commissioner Zer?
So anyone who's been around this building for a few years will know that I'm, I'm a big fan of trying new things to reach as many kids as possible. And I've sat in LEAP Committee rooms and have been a part of presentations there myself. And I can say that this is, this is a solid, amazing, wonderful structure that I, I've heard about for many years, and I'm, I'm glad to see it here in front of the board. I, I'm going to echo my colleagues in saying that, that we need more, we need more of this. Authentic experiences outside the walls of our buildings where our students are engaged in the real world, where they're asked to be innovative, creative, responsible, wonderful to our society and, and where those lessons are integrated and brought back into our buildings to lift up our students and, and make them feel real value and real authenticity in what they're doing. We, we need this so much. And I'm, I'm so glad to see it articulated in this program. And I hope that we will continue to see it articulated in, in expansion of other programs and introduction of other programs in the future.
Dr. Johnson?
I just also appreciation to the building leaders at the secondary level to embrace this alternative programming as well and being able to uniquely find existing FTE, FTE and responsibilities. And those teachers as well agreeing to serve as those specialists. Kudos all around.
The nice thing about this particular item is that because of our now switch to a new governance model, the superintendent has the authority of the board to approve programs like this. And the board does not need to act any further. The board has already approved it if the administration approves it. And so congratulations, I guess, are in order. Because as long as you've convinced the LEAP Committee and the superintendents, the board is on board with this program. We look forward to seeing the results of that at our monitoring report for OE4 when it comes up. Because I think we're going to continue to see some very positive outcomes for these students. Thank you, Ms. Rozicka, for all the work that you've done. And I'll echo Dr. Johnson's thanks to the building leaders and the teachers that are involved in the secondary schools for bringing us to kids who need it in all of our buildings in the secondary level. Thank you. This time, we will, I would hear requests for future agenda items. We know that our board agendas are going to change significantly under the new model. But still hearing items that are of interest would certainly help guide some of that if there are such requests. And hearing none, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Your turn. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.